We'll call the meeting to order and to begin, we'll call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now would please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, first.
Granquist. Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weebehouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Bossen.
Here.
Bio.
Here.
That, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Your honor, I'll be abstaining from this.
Your honor, I'll be abstaining from this.
I'll second that, your honor.
Looking for that couple somewhere. Motion in second. No discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, abstaining, Weebehouse Clausen absent, Granquist, motion carries.
Next look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move, your honor.
Motion in second, no discussion on this, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
That moves us to public hearings and related action on the council agenda, item number 24. I would open this public hearing to consider submitting a contract amendment to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for the Community Development Block grant, number 15-CR-007, for a contract extension, decrease in proposed housing activity accomplishments and budget amendment. And to explain that, what that means to us, Jan Merrill from the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
Jan Merrill of Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. So, the city is going to request three amendments to the contract, the 15CR-007. The first is going to decrease the proposed accomplishments. The city of Norfolk is requesting to decrease, decrease the accomplishments related to housing activities from 12 units to one unit. Owner occupied and rental rehab have been an activity in the comprehensive development, consequent comprehensive revitalization program since 2013. And since that time, they have accomplished 22 households, they have assisted, either rental rehab or owner occupied. And basically what's happened is the area has just been saturated, there's really no more eligible low to moderate income persons that are qualifying. And so, we've been sitting there with the money and per the suggestion of DED, they thought it would be appropriate for us to move those funds over into street budgets, into the Brosh Avenue. So that's the second amendment that we're proposing. And then, so that would be $247,539.73, that would be moved over to the Brosh Avenue. That would be a good project to help there. And because of that, then we're going to need to ask for an extension of 12 months so we can utilize those funds. We still have one commercial rehab that was connected to the 15CR, that will be finished up in the spring, and so that would be the last item of that grant.
Okay. So Jan, basically what you're telling us, because you essentially ran out of eligible projects within housing, we were able to shift these funds to another project within defined boundary.
And in this specific LMI area.
Okay. And that project was...
So we're still benefiting low to moderate income persons, it's just in a different capacity.
Okay. Thank you, Jan. Any questions for Jan on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing no one, I will...
Can I...
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yep.
Yep.
Hi, Melissa Alvarado. I was just curious as to how the non-eligibility would have been determined.
Okay. Jan, can you help us on this?
Income, income levels.
Jan, can you come, we'll have to have you come forward. Okay. Melissa, while you're up there, we need you to sign in before you go down to...
I don't really understand how we would not have any more eligible parties that were low to moderate. We're going from 22 to one, I'm just wondering if you could explain that a little bit.
Well, the applications are out there, people can apply, we simply have no one applying, and the ones that are applying are not eligible, income eligible.
And Jan, how long has that window been open, so to speak, for application?
On this particular grant, since 2015.
Okay.
What measures have been taken to let these eligible parties, or potentially eligible parties, know that this is in existence for their assistance?
Okay, so the Housing Authority, the Norfolk Housing Agency, is the one who has been advertising and promoting.
And Jan, can you explain a little bit about exactly what area we're talking? We're not talking community-wide, this is a defined geographic boundary.
It is a defined geographic area, and for the most part, it runs approximately, and this isn't exactly, but it's like south, it's like 13th Street over to First Street, and then up. And I, we could pull the maps, I hate to say exactly, but it definitely, the area that is eligible is not more to the north than the west, it's more to the south than the east.
How many applications were received for this year?
I do not have any information.
I think it would be imperative that we have more information to know exactly what kind of issues possibly knowledge or assistance-based were done or not done, or parties who, I think, I think the assembly might not be aware, it might be eligible or not eligible. And that is my biggest concern.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
I'm Gary Reschner, interim Housing Director, City of Norfolk, to address some of these questions that have been brought up, administered as part of the grant. We submitted various marketing strategies to door hangers across that First Street to 13th, or 12th Street actually it is, from Prospect South down to Monroe Avenue. We Facebooked it, we put it on the city page, there's been ads in the paper, we have people that have applied, and then A, they do not qualify due to the fact that they may have reverse mortgage on their home, they may have it in a life estate, giving it to their children, they may just not have the ability to want a second mortgage, tack on behind, which we do when we do this. So it's been marketed very strongly out there, it has hit a lot of people that we took advantage of, the upper level ones, we did a lot of upper level apartments, but that's kind of fluctuated and saturated some of the areas, so we've done a lot of marketing in that area to promote the grant out to the public that was there. So our feeling was it was best to step away. We still have reuse funds that are available through the city that can be out there for those parties that we're still helping to run forward. We receive reuse funds every month from people that are paying back their loans, so that goes into the pot that we can continue doing and helping some families. We just aren't going to take this DED money and hold on to it just for that purpose. We have, I think it's seven right now that we have money for to help, through our reuse funds.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Gary.
So you would have funds in there for seven additional...
Up to $25,000 owner occupied rehab projects.
Okay. And Gary, when you, when you did the marketing for that, was that a, was that a one-time marketing effort, was it strung out over...
Strung out over those three years.
Over the three years?
The last six months, we went to door hangers as a process to promote it, and we received no comments, no contacts, based on hundreds, you know, lots of door hangers went out.
Sure.
And those door hangers went out to every property in that... We could not get them to choose houses, we have every house in an area, I have no idea which one to watch.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Another application?
Melissa, we'll have to have you come forward if you have something more to say.
I'm still concerned about potential not having accessibility or knowledge of this resource, potential resource for the eligible parties or potentially eligible. Do we have, what, how many have applied for the last, last application period?
Approximately 20 to 22.
And how many of those were approved?
Five have been approved, probably seven declined to follow up on the applications sent, and the balance just did not even qualify or go ahead with projects under the grant.
What is the low to moderate income, what does that actually pick?
There's a graph out there that breaks down each household, I do not have it, I apologize. You're willing to get that to you?
I think one could be used to be looked at, if we take this resource away from potentially eligible people, owner occupied, is that how, the programs? Owner occupied rehabilitation?
Yes, yes, I didn't know where you were...
I'm forgetting you.
Yeah, we are, and that's lucky to say that we still have approximate funds for seven parties still that have access to that funds, plus money coming in on a monthly basis, so we increase that pot over the years.
Because low income can actually even mean they don't have internet service, and I'm very, very serious about that. So, I mean, if that's the only method of eligible or communication, these parties wouldn't have been necessarily... I don't think these parties, potentially eligible participants are knowledgeable about this resource, I just don't believe that that's heard.
So based on what, what you've heard, as far as the marketing effort goes, and the door hangers to every property in the affected area, you don't, do you think everybody has a front door?
I do. I do think that. But I don't, I would like to know how many of those maybe were owner occupied or eligible, how did we, how did we target that population who are knowledgeable of this resource, those who have front doors?
Well, I think, I think it was stated that that's exactly what we did, several times?
To the parties who would be specifically eligible.
To the parties that would be living in that area and would be specifically eligible, Gary, is that correct?
Correct. It would go, I mean, you take that whole area, you could have three doors, one could be owner occupied, one could be rental, and the other could be owned by a family that has been in the state for grandchildren, slept for someone else, so we aren't able to work with that. So the homes we went to are average homes down the street, they would have to make the decision, looking at the information, if it was something they were interested in, based on the door hanger provided by us to that home, to that household.
If this, if these funds are transferred to this other fund, but I didn't quite understand the details of regarding, what, what is that being used for in lieu of this specific program?
It's a Brosh Avenue reconstruction project, a reconstruction of the Brosh Avenue from Fifth to First Street, which is a, which is a project that has received CDBG funds in the past. And so, I think what I'm, what I'm gathering from this is that this has been an open application process since 2015. You've had applicants go through the process, some have chosen to see it all the way through, some haven't. And I don't know, Gary, if you can tell us when the last application you got was, do you, do you know?
We have one application that we probably received, I'm going to put it in November, potential. So what we will do is work, work with that person going into our reuse funds. And this has been typical over 10 years that I've been there, that the applications are, you may receive 25, you may get four to five that can actually follow through, follow through.
And Gary, you said you had, how, how many approved?
We've had probably 22 over the last, in so many years.
But since, since this grant came available?
This grant has five approved different occupied, owner occupied projects, we also had a couple of upper level projects for rental assistance.
So, so would it be safe to say that you have, you have as, you have as, as much funds still available as you have used? So it's about 100%, right?
Exactly, right now.
Okay. All right.
I don't have that exact number yet, but we could do it tomorrow, right now.
It's not like the fund is going away, it remains...
It will not, and it replenishes itself over time, and people either can receive a 10% payback or a 50% payback.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm trying to understand too, because certainly we want those funds to be used for the people that need them. But in my mind, it doesn't, it, it sounds like we've done our due diligence in, in letting people know that those funds are available, and if we do move these funds, it sounds like there are just as many funds left as have been used, and it wouldn't seem to me that folks would be adversely affected by the movement of these funds to help with the Brosh Avenue project. So, in my mind, we're not, we're not, not servicing those folks that may need them in the future.
Is it possible to utilize these funds in a wider area besides the current parameters?
Not under this program, to my understanding. Is that correct, Gary?
That's correct, that's the CIB.
There's just one other point that we have to remember, the grant contract is expired. DED asked us to move these funds because they have not been utilized. If we do not move these funds, I'm not sure that DED will extend the contract, and we may lose the contract.
The money could go away, right.
The city may lose that funding. Now, I can't say that it's definitely going to happen, but it was per DED's suggestion that this money moved from this housing to Brosh Avenue. It wasn't our suggestion.
Okay.
The other fact along with Jan's point there is, we, we need to use our reuse funds before we would apply again for another grant, so this would allow us to utilize what reuse funds are in that pot, and then say a year, so we can come back.
Resetting the process.
And reset the process for another three-year timeframe. So it's not like when I could have opportunity for people down the road to afford all their homes.
And the Nebraska, our department, district, we are a regional district, and we have regional funds for owner occupied and rental rehab, so someone can comply, apply directly to us for those funds. So there's another option that we have those funds available.
Okay.
I just want to use myself as an example, I wasn't in the parameters of this particular resource. However, I have gone online, I have gone on Facebook, I have done a variety of different research methods, looking for various resources available to the public that are simply available, and I've never come across this, and I'm a very educated individual. And I have looked on the City of Norfolk's webpage, I've looked on the Housing Authority's webpage, I would never receive one, a door hanger, due to my current address, but I have not seen where this has been advertised at all. And I've done, I've actually done a search, and I'm just a party in the regular public.
Thank you, Melissa. This is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment, should do so at this point. And no one else will move to close the hearing and move to item number 25, and look for a motion to consider approval of the mayor signing and forwarding a letter to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development on the 15-CR-007 CDBG Grant Contract Extension Decrease in Proposed Housing Activity Accomplishments and Budget Amendment.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on this, council?
I guess, your honor, the thing that strikes me the most is that this comes at the suggestion of DED, and I think we would behoove ourselves to, you know, kind of follow their lead, their, their direction on it, so that we, we don't potentially lose these funds, so...
Thank you, councilman. I would agree, coming at the recommendation of the department, that it is wise and prudent for us to move forward on this, I think, also hearing some of the public comments, we can look at our process in terms of making sure that we, to the fullest extent, make public the notification of the grant application parameters, and it seems that that process is in place, but there's always maybe room for improvement, where we can make sure that the communication is maximized to the fullest extent possible. So, any other comments or discussion, council? Okay. None, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
It moves us to our regular agenda, item number 26. I would look for a motion to consider approval of amendment number two to the Engineering Services Agreement with Olson for Construction Administration, Observation, and Project Closeout for the Northeast Industrial Water Main Project and the Northeast Industrial Sewer Main Phase Two Project for amount not to exceed $225,100.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second. Okay, motion second, and Steve, if you could give us some background, please.
Mayor and council members, this is an amendment to our engineering contract with Olson's engineering. They did the design for the Northeast Industrial Water Main Extension. That project has been awarded and is going into the construction mode, so this would add the engineering services needed for that, for the construction contract portion. In addition to the water main extension, we've also bid last fall the sanitary sewer extension out to the Northeast industrial area. That project was designed by Kirkham, Michlin Associates. As we started to compile the various, the two different engineering services agreement for construction, we started, you know, we looked at the numbers, asked Olson's to provide us a single number to provide services on both of those contracts, and there was a reasonable savings, I don't remember the exact number, but I'd say about $35,000, to combine those into one contract with Olson's and Associates. So, that's what's before you, is amendment number two to Olson's design contract for $225,100 for construction services.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve on that? Another step forward to facilitating what could be further industrial development, the primary of the community for it, so I think that's good work. If there's no further discussion, council, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item number 22nd, 27. I look for a motion to consider resolution number 2019-4, approving a sidewalk waiver for Norfolk Wings LLC at 2019, Crenzen Drive.
Your honor, I'd offer for consideration resolution 2019-4.
Second. Okay, motion in second, and Val, could you give us some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This project is better known as Buffalo Wild Wings, that is the Norfolk Wings LLC property owner. They are requesting a sidewalk waiver, they are on the corner of 20th and Crenzen, and the waiver that's part of the packet is actually providing approval of both 20th and Crenzen as a waiver, if you would like to do that. The Planning Commission actually has a recommendation to grant the waiver, to not put the sidewalk on 20th Street, but to put the sidewalk in on Crenzen, and so you would need to make an amendment and a recommendation for that, if you choose to do something different than what's in the packet and the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Their reasoning behind that was because, Steve can probably speak to this a little more, we as a city are putting in a crosswalk across Highway 275 that would then get the people north of 275 to this area and the restaurant, because I believe we've had some requests that people in the hotels back there on the north side have been wanting to go to the south there and requested a crosswalk.
Thank you, Val. Questions on that, council?
Steve, what would be the, the reasoning between the two, 20th and Crenzen?
The way 20th, the way 20th is built, the parking lots for both ShopKo and the parking lot, to some extent for Buffalo Wild Wings, extends too close to the, to 20th Street, to the back of the curb. It would be very difficult to get a, even a four-foot sidewalk along there. You'd have to put in some retaining wall and potentially take outside or portions of the parking lot. So, as we look at Kensington, it's not Kensington, Kinzen? Crenzen, excuse me. Even along Crenzen, which is the, the frontage road along those business areas, many of those businesses and their parking areas have been built out to Crenzen to the extent that you wouldn't be able to get a sidewalk along those either. We can get a sidewalk in front of Buffalo Wild Wings and in front of that, the bank that would be adjacent there too. That gets you up to that first approach into the ShopKo parking lot area. It also provides a way for folks that are crossing over 275 on the sidewalk to get to a point where there's sidewalk, and then we'll work with Buffalo Wild Wings to figure out how we get them from that sidewalk into the Buffalo Wild Wings site. For now, it gets, and I believe eventually here there'll be a conversation coming back to about calling in the sidewalk to get that as far north there as we can, at least to that first approach. If that makes sense. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Do we have a site plan of this, where the sidewalk would go? Is that in the back?
I don't think the sidewalk's in the packet. I would, it would be up along, when you look there, just off the top of my head, I would say you have a terrace that's probably 15 feet wide, maybe wider, between the Buffalo Wild Wings property line and that bank property line at Kensington, Crenzen. So it would go, the sidewalk we would install would be up along that right away.
And yeah, I see, I got it pulled up here, I see, so that way then you would take, I guess my question is, they're crossing at 20th, right?
They're going to cross, yeah.
So would you need a sidewalk to go all the way in front of Buffalo Wild Wings, all the way down to the bank, if they cross at 20th right into the...
You wouldn't have to, no.
It just... That's my question. Do you follow that? 20th is on the east side of Buffalo Wild Wings there, and so you're going to come across, there's a sidewalk there now in the terrace next to 275. You get on that, then you're going to cross this, you're going to cross this road, and then you're going to walk, I think people would just walk across the terrace into their parking lot to go to the front door, otherwise you're going to take a right turn and walk 150 feet to the other inlet into Buffalo Wild Wings, and then cross, and you could walk to the bank. But I'm just asking if this is, if this is practical or needed? I mean, I could see a sidewalk across, you know, on the terrace between 275 and, I don't know, who's the name of that street? Crenzen Drive?
Crenzen.
And then, we, you cross there, I could see another walk into their parking lot.
Right.
That would make more sense than another 200-foot of sidewalk that won't get used. Just a thought. Throwing it out there.
Well, Crenzen is kind of the access road off of 275, right?
Correct, yes.
It's the east-west road.
Yeah.
Or, it's not quite east-west, but it's...
Right, it curves down through there.
Frontage road.
Yeah. And wouldn't that kind of tie into, what is that over there? At the ShopKo, you've got Western Auto, is that Western Auto?
It's a bank.
The bank.
But why would you?
So it's, I think what it's, it's really about, how do you terminate, how do you terminate the sidewalk that we're going to extend over to the west side of Crenzen?
Correct.
You just, you can't just terminate it per se at an ADA ramp, you're going to bring it to the back of the ADA ramp, you're going to have your, your area there... it to the back of the ADA ramp, you're gonna have your, your area there, your five-by-five area, or, now where do you go? And so we need to tie it somewhere. The thought was, well, we just go ahead and run it west along Crenzin Drive there for a ways, and then you could move, tie into the Buffalo Wild Wings parking lot or something. Just in looking at the area, you know, that's probably about the only stretch there from Twentieth north, three-hundred feet or so until that first approach into Shopko. It's the only stretch along there that you could really ever get sidewalk into.
Yeah, 'cause you, there's no way you're gonna get a sidewalk in front of the bank.
Well, I'm looking at whatever that next building is directly north, directly west.
Oh, sorry, yeah. I mean, the auto store. You never get it, once you go past there, it's all, yep, yep, yep. The photo I'm looking at, Buffalo Wild Wings, isn't there yet.
Yeah. So it's, I'm not gonna say it's a sidewalk to somewhere, but to call that sidewalk in all the way along there, at least you'd have sidewalk along there.
It usually doesn't make sense to have a sidewalk along there.
I don't know why, the only person people would use it is if they're coming to Buffalo Wild Wings, if they're gonna cross the street from the hotel, and they're gonna cross at Twentieth, and they're gonna walk into the store. And they're gonna walk...
Currently, there's not, there's no connection. You cannot access Buffalo Wild Wings from two-seventy-five because there's no, there's no sidewalk or crosswalk connection.
Correct.
What planning commission said is, we don't think sidewalk is necessary on Twentieth Street, so we'll grant the waiver there. But we do think you need to figure out how to connect the crosswalk on two-seventy-five to that business establishment. Correct? That's essentially where we have to...
The way I'm looking at it is, it's kind of like the parking lot at the Salvation Army. You know, when you walk across the parking lot, you park in the, maybe the west, southwest, or, yeah, the southwest side of the parking lot there, you cross, there's a little terrace there, you cross, and you're on Norfolk Avenue. That, to me, seems like that would be a way to get to Buffalo Wild Wings. But if there's nobody here representing Buffalo Wild Wings, is there? And it must not be a really, or the bank. I don't know if I'm making a big deal about nothing, then, really, so. I just, it doesn't, it's just gonna, it's gonna look, 'cause you'll, you will do that. They will probably put an access into their parking lot, and then they'll run a sidewalk all the way over. So, I don't know. I guess...
There's still a portion, though, even though what you're saying, Shane, I think I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
There's still a portion of sidewalk that would have to be constructed to...
Yeah, you'd have to get into your parking lot, yeah. Kind of like what you see at, so that parking lot to Norfolk Avenue. I don't know, it just seems like a lot of lineal foot of walk that...
Is there a sidewalk in the median?
Can you go, can you go area, area, Val?
Crenzian, ten, man. Two-seventy-five?
There's no sidewalk. The sidewalk ends on the, it's on the north, north side of two-seventy-five. There is the, what you see that might look like sidewalk is a drainage structure.
Oh, okay, I thought that was a sucker.
No.
So, deciding tonight, though, doesn't necessarily lock, lock down where the sidewalk's placed. We're just deciding whether a waiver is granted.
Right.
So, I think we'd be in agreement that some sort of sidewalk needs to be in place along, on Crenzin, maybe not Twentieth necessarily.
Come across, and then on the backside here. You don't think they'll walk down to the bank, or?
Right, and I agree. To me, if you call, if you call it in and you make them go all the way along Buffalo Wild Wings and then just it ends at their property line, it would seem like the next logical step would be to call it in in front of, whether that's a bank or auto store or whatever, and at least get it up to the, to the intersection, so that it's stopping somewhere. Thanks, Beth. Short-term, it could just, we get it across Crenzin Drive up to the terrace there in front of Buffalo Wild Wings and just work with Buffalo Wild Wings to extend it west to some point where then they want to turn it into their, to the restaurant.
Sounds to me like a little more discussion with property owners is in order.
The underlying resolution, though, doesn't necessarily spell out where the sidewalk has to be.
No.
Place, correct?
Correct. I think, the way I was reading the resolution is, you know, you either give, right now, the way the resolution to us is for a waiver on both sides. Our option that's being presented is, well, okay, let's grant the resolu, or grant the waiver on Twentieth Street and not grant a waiver on, on Crenzin. Now, the extent of what happens on Crenzin is, is something that could occur at, you know, as we progress on along, but at least then it creates a port for the people that come on across through there and allows also, as you suggested, that there would be the opportunity then to get with the, with the owners, both, both the Wild Wings people and, and the US Bank people, as you were presenting. That seems to be kind of a logical solution there to stop there. And I wouldn't say that it wouldn't get used, because I have gone, driven that area when I have people, you know, people walk at lunchtime. And bank, you can tell they're bank personnel because they're a little fancier dressed than a contractor anyway, so. And they're out there, they're walking that way, and they're walking on Crenzin Drive, so, which, in my mind, isn't the safest. And we have it a lot of spots in the community, some that, for twenty years, I've said should have sidewalks on them, and we haven't quite gotten there yet, so.
What does the city ordinance say on the construction there and the sidewalk? If they're asking for a waiver, there must be something in the ordinance.
Our code says that it should be sidewalk on all sides of the abutting streets.
And so the businesses in the past have received waivers?
Not necessarily. I think they've just been missed, maybe?
Well, I don't think that was missed so much as those businesses happened there before that ordinance went into effect. And so that's, I mean, that's, that's where we're walking forward from, because, you know, remember when Shopko went in, that sidewalk ordinance was not in effect at that time. I believe also that was the case when US Bank went in. That's been many, many years ago, so.
And to your point, Councilman, I think, you know, we've seen in other places in the community where putting in sidewalks in one stretch may not make sense right in that moment, but it helps plan for long-term development of connections that do benefit people. So, I think we have to keep that in mind, wouldn't we, when we consider these as well? But to, to the underlying point, what's before us tonight is whether we grant waivers. And the resolution in front of us grants waivers for both Crenzin and Twentieth, and the planning commission had recommended allowing the waiver on Twentieth, but denying the waiver on Crenzin. So, if that's the direction we'd want to go, I think we would have to hear an amendment.
Well, I'm gonna offer an amendment to resolution twenty-nineteen dash four that allows for the waiver on Twentieth Street, but allows for additional conversation on Crenzin.
I'll second that.
So with that additional conversation, that means we're open to whose conversation? The owner and staff?
Good idea.
Yeah. Throw it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll find out in a minute if I did that properly or not.
Councilman, I do think that, given the uncertainty here, and I think as many of you have pointed out, nobody from Buffalo Wild Wings is this here to represent, I think for clarity and moving forward, it would make more sense to table and have those conversations, and then come back, so that what we, what we have in front of us is a clear resolution based on those conversations, I think.
Well, stay there, and I'll make a motion to table resolution twenty-nineteen dash four.
I'll second that.
Has, the resolution hasn't been op, or, I mean, it hasn't been opened yet, or aren't we in public hearing?
No, this is consideration.
Okay.
So...
Sorry.
The motion to table does supersede anything else, so we have a motion and second on motion to table, and, but no, there's no discussion on the motion to table. So, yeah, we'll then look for your votes, please. On the motion to table.
It's a motion to table.
Right.
All council members present voting in the affirmative motion to table resolution is adopted.
Okay, item number twenty-eight, for motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with the Schimmer Associates Incorporated for the Benjamin Avenue project from Thirteenth Street to First Street for total project fee of nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of the construction contract with Schimmer and Associates.
Okay, motion second. Steve, could you give us some background on this project?
Mayor and council members, I'd be pleased to do so. I'm gonna run through several numbers, if you wanna, if you wanna write them down relative to the, to the overall project and, and what this means. Stepping up to the podium is Doug, Doug Hawley with Schimmer. Doug is the transportation engineering manager for Schimmer. He was involved in our twenty-thirty transportation master plan as well, back in two thousand and six. So he knows, he knows the area well and the corridor, and he'll be able to answer any questions you have as well. The nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-dollar fee is part of a total project budget that's in the range of approximately ten million dollars, in today's dollars, probably about nine-point-eight, and as we advance that to three and a half to five percent, we're probably in the ten and a half million dollar range for total project cost. The project breaks down accordingly. It's about seven-point-three million dollars in construction. That includes about six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in potential utility relocates. Engineering fees on the project between design and construction services, about one-point-five million, and acquisition services for potential right-of-way development. Again, that's about eight-hundred-and, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars or so. Those are, those are the big numbers in terms of how the, the total project breaks down. The engineering fee of nine-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-six dollars and ninety-eight cents is approximately twelve-point-nine percent of anticipated construction cost. What is, what is all in there from a design perspective? There's an, we'll be looking at some options, some high-level options on how we might deal with the First Street from Benjamin Avenue North to the, to the diversion channel or to the levee channel. We are starting to lose that. I think we've got a, a window here to, to look at how we want to deal with that. The hope is that we can find a way to provide additional life to that through maintenance practices versus potential reconstruction. If we have to go into reconstruction on that stretch, we're looking at having to bring that whole right-of-way corridor up to standards, which would mean wider shoulders, quite a bit of earthwork and that type of stuff in there. So, it would be most advantageous for us to identify processes, procedures that we could use in there to, from a maintenance perspective, to extend the life of First Street. In addition, there's an active transportation plan in there, which is bicycling and walking. That active transportation plan is gonna look at, at the northeast quarter of, of the city, Norfolk Avenue North and Highway eighty-one East, and identify some, kind of an active transportation plan that then could be used not just in that area, but there'll be components of that that we could use throughout the community as well. The team that, part of the team that's gonna be doing that is Tool Design. Tool Design is a national leader in active transportation planning. They've been engaged in the cities of Omaha, Lincoln, and Hastings is in the processes of engaging them at this time. The signal design, there's two signals in the project, one at Riverside and one at First Street. So we'll take advantage of this project and look at bringing, you know, those signals up to a design standard in terms of controllers and signal heads and so forth, that we can then take that technology over time and move those into the other signals throughout the community and, and get some of our controllers up to more current standards. We're gonna look at the bridge sidewalk on the south side of the levee. Right now, we don't have sidewalk that crosses across the south side of the levee. It only crosses on the north side. And so there is some fee in here to look at how we would get a sidewalk along the south side of that, of that structure as well. The traffic study portion of the project would be a traffic study from Highway eighty-one East all the way to Victory Road. And certainly, a, a major congestion point is gonna be the YMCA and the middle school. You know, as we continue, continue to see the middle school grow and the traffic impacts in that area, they're, they're pretty substantial. So that, that's all included in the design. The twelve-point-nine percent fee is pretty, I guess, not out of, out of the ballpark. I did call Lincoln and visit with, with them. Their design fee is for similar-type reconstruction run around thirteen to fifteen percent, so we're on the low side of what some of our larger cities would see. With that, I'll open it up for any questions you might have relative to the contract, and certainly Doug's here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, Steve, any questions? Steve?
Well, just a couple things. I was gonna say, I, I figured that it's a real competitive percentage. I, I was actually expecting a little more that way, so. No, that's fine, the constituents, but along with that, the timeframe that we're working within and the knowledge that your firm possesses because of their work prior to the, to this, I think is just gonna come to benefit us. It's, it's a, it's a corridor that we hear about on a daily basis of, of the deterioration, and, and so it's, it's time that we get moving forward on it, so.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Steve, the tool design that you mentioned?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's another company?
Correct.
Are they included in this fee?
Yes.
All right. And then we're funding just out of our highway allocation?
Correct.
For this, or?
It'd be similar to a traffic, or a, a traffic study. You know, you have to understand the traffic in the corridor, and, and this is kind of in that similar light. We need to understand what's going on for, for other modes of transportation, specifically active transportation, walking and bicycling in that corridor, and be able to understand how to address those, and so that's...
In this, this engineering services agreement includes, I call it turnkey, down to when it's turned back over to us.
Yep, it does not include construction services. That would be an amendment at that time.
All right.
After the project's bid.
I was just gonna add, yeah, it's a, it's a big number, but then it's a big investment that needs to be made, also. It's a project whose time has come. It's been put off for some time, and the longer we wait to do it, the more expensive it's gonna become. And I think this process has worked well, and as Steve indicated, the, the engineering fee compared to what you might usually expect on a project of such complexity is, is quite reasonable, I think, in this case.
I would point out that within the tool design portion of the project, their proposal, they do show a typical section. A typical section is just meant to be a typical section. It's no preconceived concept of what this corridor might look like. So, in light that other people in the community might be looking at that, I, I thought that was important.
Anything like that?
Yeah, on behalf, on behalf of Schimmer, just appreciate the opportunity to, to work with the city. You know, it's really a team effort. Schimmer's leading the effort, UJ, U R, to really help, uh, the field sources, the survey on the project. They're here in town, the, the cost segments for this, for the city by utilizing their services here locally. They're also the new traffic engineering staff, as you mentioned. They're also the new traffic engineers that I think has, um, physical drivers, the public. There is a very, I would say, a very detailed, very, um, significant process to engage public on this project. And it's, it's a major, uh, completely commercial, fully developed, almost wholly developed. And engaging the public, how it's on board is the key, the point, to make this project successful. Look forward to getting started on it. Um, it is a fairly aggressive schedule, um, trip, you know, weekend, people, it's right, right? Looking forward to much snow.
I've got, and I'd direct toward you with this for Steve. I think it's important that you explain, um, where these funds come from to pay for some projects like this. So I think that gets confused and mixed up, that people think it comes out of property tax and general fund, and it doesn't necessarily do that. And I, I think it's important that we explain that.
So we get about three million dollars a year that we spend in our street program. Three million dollars for a project like this, obviously that would take, it'd take three years to pay for that plus. So this project will be bonded. That's where most of the funds are gonna come from, about, over, over the timeframe it takes us to design it and build it. About seven and a half million dollars will be bonded. So what that means is we'll go out and get, you get, get bonds, and then over the next fifteen or twenty years, Randy and I are still having those conversations, we'll take a portion of the CHAF and pay off that bond.
And the CHAF tax comes from where?
The CHAF tax comes from state gas tax.
Thank you.
And that's, that's a, pretty much a fixed amount of funding that we receive year to year from the state for transportation.
It's about two point five million in, in, in city highway allocation funds is what CHAF stands for. I, I found out recently that we're the only city in the state that uses the acronym CHAF to describe those. So I, I will explain that as city highway allocation funds. We get another about four hundred, four hundred and seventy-six thousand a year, uh, in the STP fund buyout, which is another state tax.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions, Council? If none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, move to standard number twenty-nine. And this is consideration of rescinding action taken on ordinance number fifty-five eighty-two at the December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting, which failed by a vote of four to three to approve an amendment to section twenty-seven dash two eighty, point zero two of the city code to modify the boundaries of the North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district and to consider approval of a North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district map delineating the resulting boundary.
I'll make the motion.
Senator.
Okay, a motion and a second to, uh, rescind the action. And again, background on this, um, the, the action rescinded, uh, proposed to be rescinded was taken on December seventeenth. Failed to amend the North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district to expand the boundaries of the overlay district. Because previous notice was given by Councilman Merrill at the January seventh meeting, it takes a majority to adopt. And now would be the time we can begin discussion on that underlying, uh, resolution. And again, just for public, uh, record's sake, that, um, action taken at the last meeting, resulted in a four to three vote on this. State statute provides that in that case, similar to the, to the case where a mayor can break the tie in the case of a four to four vote, on a four to three vote where the mayor can provide a fifth, um, vote to, uh, supply the majority on, uh, resolution, it is allowable for the, the, the mayor to vote. Uh, we did not pre, proceed that way mistakenly. We did not follow that procedure, which is why, um, we can hear this tonight and basically, again, um, initiate discussion on the underlying motion, which is expansion, uh, proposed expansion of the North Fork Elkhorn River overlay district. So with all that said, um, I will open discussion on the underlying resolution. And I would just offer on that, uh, we, we had a lot of discussion on this. Last time at the public hearing, we've had over the course of several months, um, public input on this matter. This was, it's not necessarily been a hasty process. The comprehensive plan that was adopted by this council almost two years ago called for, uh, a North Fork Elkhorn River, uh, district as laid out, um, in this proposal. And we began discussion of establishing this boundary map, um, about eight months ago, I believe, the first half of two thousand and eighteen. I mentioned we took, um, various opportunities to take in public input on this, meeting with neighbors, um, in one of the affected neighborhoods. Had a town hall meeting specifically on this topic, planning commission hearing, city council hearing. And I'll leave it there. We can pick up, um, a council discussion at, at this time.
Your Honor, I, uh, I'm gonna move to amend ordinance number fifty-five eighty-two that's before us so that the area north of Benjamin Avenue is removed from the proposed expanded boundaries of the North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district. And the amended map, in the language, I believe, to change, the ordinance itself has been distributed to everyone for their consideration.
Okay, we have a motion to amend on the table?
Mr. Mayor, is there a public discussion on this, allow me?
Um, if, if there should be a second on this motion, we can enter into a discussion period, yes.
Please.
Okay, we have a motion and second on the amendment, so, yes, at this point, we'd welcome.
Uh, good to you, I'm only four one, Harrison, right? Mr. Mayor, council, councilman, staff, uh, thank you for an opportunity to speak here. I'm not here, uh, there's an old proverb, that states whoever looks for good will find kindness. And that is my intent and my hope, uh, both sides here, uh, this evening. I think the city of Norville, uh, has done some really good things in looking at this downtown revitalization, um, format plan. Moving ahead and we've got the real point, uh, center, uh, working in with that down there, but that's, like, that means that I, uh, I'd like to move on. I'm not sure why this keeps coming back, this issue, because the, the ordinance did fail, uh, last month. And it's, as an analogy, it's a little like a losing Super Bowl coach going to the NFL commissioner, uh, after the game and saying, you know what? I was looking at my playbook, and there was a play that I'd forgotten about. And if we would've been allowed to play that play, it would have assured our victory in that game. And, uh, so, uh, that's kind of a comparison to what is happening here this evening with this coming back. I know this, uh, this action is a lawful discussion, uh, I know that. But it's most assuredly highly unethical, uh, in my opinion. Takes up time from the council here, uh, dealing with this proposed overlay expansion. The expansion part of this plan will certainly put more constraints, regulation on the backs of citizens. And, uh, the very regulations that you gentlemen, who are all elected, you're in these chairs because of the people that put you there. And there are people that will be negatively affected by the passage of this proposed ordinance, on the regulation standpoint. And, and please don't try to, to say that a regulation like this is good for the public, uh, and it's for our protection. What we need protected from is further overreach and regulatory strangulation from city government. And it slowly seeps in with ordinances like this. You were elected to work out for our best interest for the electorate. And this proposal is not one of those opportunities. Why would you discuss a further vote on requirements, uh, that, that make the electorate have to come before the council? Have to come before, uh, the subcommittees, have to come before city staff, uh, with mounds of supporting documentation and deal in front of them, uh, to make desired changes on their own private property? We already have ordinances in this city, so very, uh, that would protect us. We don't need more. Water is another concern. I, I don't know who the hydrological engineer is that has been consulted, uh, regarding, uh, the alteration of the stream flow in the North Fork. But it's a big issue. There are ramifications, major ramifications to altering stream flow, uh, anywhere. And you can ask about the expanse the San Antonio goes through in cleaning a system, uh, that you're all shooting for here with this proposed ordinance. Water quality is another issue. Anybody familiar with EDQ's two thousand and eighteen report on the North Fork River? Are you aware that it's altered, that it's, uh, uh, it's impaired for recreational use? Doesn't equal bacteria? Anybody aware of that? And, and we're wanting to use this as a recreational draw, uh, in this community, and it just doesn't make sense. The city has spent tens of thousands of dollars with Holson Associates. Really numerous, brightly colored, uh, what-if renditions and definitions and diagrams. And I believe those have crowded some minds, uh, rationally thinking, uh, minds. And it's probably the reality of, of what can be in this community. The current North Fork of the Elkhorn, Elkhorn overlay district map, which the mayor alluded to earlier, I, I think is right on. It encompasses that downtown area, it, uh, it involves improving the look and character of downtown. It improves the riverfront enhancement zone that's lumped in with that. And it involves keeping current downtown businesses open and allow space for new businesses to relocate. And I applaud that effort. I look at that plan, that downtown revitalized by a titization plan, and, and I hope all three of those happen in that downtown area. But it does not take further expansion of that area to make those three happen. Instead of expanding and reaching, uh, government out further, wouldn't it be more judicious use of your time to discuss and implement actions that will result in the completion of improvements on the current component, the current portion of that overlay? Leading by example will always bring more and better results than leading through, uh, regulation. Instead of expanding in both directions along that North Fork range, why not just leave that area as a natural state and allow biking and hiking along there? And focus your attention and efforts and bunnies close to that downtown area and in that, uh, enhancement zone around Johnson Park? I think it's wrong to impose this ordinance because there is a chain of more regulation around the necks of private homeowners, churches, schools, businesses. It's uncalled for, it's unjustified government overreach, in my opinion, and further property owner burden. In my opinion, there's no need to amend this proposal ordinance. There is however, a need for this proposal to just die and focus on what you have. Please spend your energy and focus on completing the planned improvements within the current downtown and riverfront enhancement zone and that Johnson Park area. Show residents of Norville and Northeast Nebraska, uh, all the surrounding communities that you can in fact handle what's already on your plate. And in that effort, I'm fully on board. If you focus on that downtown, that, 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 the current riverfront enhancement, uh, area, I'm fully on board. You can involve them, but it needs to be through your leadership in this process and not through your dictatorship with the, with the regulation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roe. Any questions, Ms. Roe?
So respond just to a, a bit of that and, um, you know, do respect your interest in us making improvements in that downtown riverfront area. And would note that those are ongoing. I think you'll see the Brash Avenue reconstruction project leads to that. That's a project that, before us this year. There is planning and save, saving and budgeting for, for improvements in that general area, like you're, you're speaking about the Johnson Park area. There are a restoration project which we've sought partnerships for, uh, to pay for. So that work is, is ongoing. And, um, in my mind, and we'll have council discussion on this as well, this overlay district effort, um, is a reasonable one that was called for again, um, in the comprehensive plan, which lays out a plan for, uh, long-term development and managed growth in a community. Development and growth that, that makes sense, that helps in fact maximize people's long-term property values by, uh, guiding growth in a, in a orderly way and bringing some consistency to specially designated areas like this. Consistency in compatible uses and consist, consistency in aesthetics that in fact will help any new development. We're not talking about what already is because that's not impacted by this. We're talking about anything that should happen to, uh, develop in the future. Having some basic strain or narrative of consistency in how it, it grows, so it can maximize further growth in the future. So that's how I'd respond to that. At that point, we're, at this point, we have a motion on the table and a second to amend the underlying, uh, resolution, which is the proposed expansion of the district boundaries.
One comment, um, wasn't here at the last one. That's part of the problem, I guess, tonight. But, uh, one concern I have with this is the R-one that's encompassed in this overlay, uh, and the restrictions that would accompany that. Like again, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I know that they've, we've, there's been some talk about, uh, addressing that issue. But the R-one included in this would, concerns me simply because, you know, one, I'm in construction. I know what it's like to try, when you get into things and all of a sudden you've got other regulations you gotta deal with. I don't understand why R-one is included in this overlay. In my opinion, it doesn't need to be, um, because if it, you know, if you, I can see if it was R-three or C-one, C-two, C-three industrial. I do see some of the zoning needs to be cleaned up in this area, you know, and I, I, Rob, you made a good motion earlier to eliminate those properties north of Benjamin. But my concern is exactly from Elm to Georgia, that area that's all encompassed in there on the east side of the, and, and without having that discussion and taking this into a lengthy discussion tonight, I would suggest to table this. Put this back into subcommittee and have the discussions about what sort of deal, how we're gonna handle R-one regulation. I'm sure that's, Vals probably has, can answer some of those questions. I just don't, to. I just don't, tonight, I don't feel comfortable with how that sits, I guess is what I'm getting at. I agree with Josh on a lot of things here, but that one is one area that I think is, you know, just don't understand how it would work, you know, if I pull permit to put a fireplace in, what I'm going to be dealing with?
Yes.
I think that's some discussions that need to be had and so homeowners and property owners in that area aren't impacted greatly by what we're trying to do. Now, on the business side of things, if I was a business owner in that area and had some property in that area, this to me is not a bad thing because it's going to ensure that my property value either goes up or stays the same because I don't have somebody coming in and put something that isn't good for me and my business because it would control some of that and aesthetically pleasing at the same time. But the residential side of things, the property owners in that area, I just struggle with that part of it. So, without trying to take this thing, put it away, I think, tonight, I think, I don't know how it would go tonight if we come to a vote, but I think there's room for more discussion because I know communities do this and this is for a long-term thought process and long-term development. And I think you need to get it right the first time so we're not coming, people aren't coming back to us upset about certain things and why they had to put a walk here and why they had to do this and why they had to use this and, you know, I think those things need to be addressed and if we can't come to agreement, obviously it goes away. But if there is some sort of agreement, because I believe that a big portion of the community wants this and obviously there's a big portion of the community doesn't want this, but I think that part of it needs to be, we should feel comfortable explaining that. So, with that said, I don't know how this works now that you've made a motion, but, and it's been seconded.
Right, right.
But my thought would be this, it'd be a good time to get some more discussion and really get into this. I don't think anybody put this in front of everybody with any intent of causing alarm to people. I think it's, so I don't know how that is handled, but I think there needs to be more discussion on this.
Okay. Fair question, Shane, and I think we're having some discussion on the procedure moving forward, but I do want to take the time to address some of those because they did come up during the course of the public discussion on this. And this, by my count, is the fifth public input opportunity on this topic in general. We did spend a lot of time this summer talking about the impact on residential of this. And Val, maybe you can help me a little bit, but that was one of the main questions that we got. What would, how would this affect me if I happened to live within this district? The short answer to me is it doesn't affect anything you have going on right now, but should you, by some natural disaster, fire, whatever the case might be, need to rebuild? We wanted to make sure that there was an exemption built into this that it could be obtained to not require anyone to have to build, to rebuild in the manner that the guidelines are spelled out in the district for new growth. So, Val, if you want to address a little bit of that question on the exemptions provided for residential activity?
Yeah, something that we put in the very first time when we put this in, in September of seventeen, I believe it was, the exemptions within the overlay district, number one is single-family development existing as of September 5th, 2017, shall be exempt from all overlay districts' special development regulations except for non-conforming uses and newly-built structures. And so, that's where we're saying, you're already there, we're not going to have you follow these regulations because your house is already built. Like the mayor was saying, we do have a waiver process in here that if a natural disaster, that over fifty percent tornado, fire, or something along those lines, that you have to start over again with your house, there is a waiver process to go before the Planning Commission to request to not follow these new regulations for that.
And I think that's where my discussion comes in, is the fact that I'm not quite hundred percent in agreement with some of those, some of that. So, that's where I would have issue with, is the fact that I don't think we should have to go and have to get a waiver to put in R1, if that makes any sense. So, that's where I'm at tonight, and that's why I think this needs to go back to, that's why I propose to have more discussion on it.
If I may, I know this is complicated and with Robert's rules, it's messy. So, I'd like to give all of you your three options for what we can do tonight because I've heard it mentioned to move to table this. So, I'm going to tell you the three options that you have before you. So, if you want to move forward on the motion to rescind, we already have one amendment that's open from Councilman Merrill regarding removing the area north of Benjamin. So, that is currently before us, so that will have to be acted on first. We could, you could vote on that amendment, there could be more amendments, and then you could vote on the motion to rescind and that, so it could move forward. You could continue, you could amend all the amendments you want to make tonight, you could do that if the, and that could pass. If that were to fail, if the motion to rescind after the amendments were to fail, it would go back to that December seventeenth date. So, we would have to wait six months from that time to refile for this again, and it would start again with the Planning Commission. The other option is to move to table it and then we would just push this out to the future and as you said, Councilman Clausen, you know, could take this back to subcommittee and discuss further and then bring it back.
Question for you, council. So, as you noted in the first, if the motion to rescind fails, then it has got a six-month waiting period from the December seventeenth timeframe. So, but there is nothing to prevent those kinds of conversations from going on. It's just that the overlay district would not be moving forward and would not be in place for that six-month time period, and it would give six months to put, I mean, I think this is a very complicated issue here and what, and I noted it the last time when this was up at the December seventeenth meeting, that, you know, we went at that time, if you take the, what's shown on the map here, the red area is the overlay district that currently exists. I did not square foot it on out, but I suspect that we more than doubled the area that we took in. If we took the stuff as it was presented, it was probably close to tripling the area if we kept the stuff that was in going across on Benjamin Avenue. So, that's why I voted against it at that time, and that's why at this point in time I believe I would vote against the motion to rescind. And that still gives us, I mean, it does not hamper staff or subcommittees from meeting to go as Councilman Clausen suggested for further detail. I don't see what the fire is that's pushing this thing that it needs to occur now. So, and I know it was, it's part of the comprehensive plan, but it's also part of the comprehensive plan. If you look at our outlying areas, there's a lot of areas that aren't rezoned that have that have underlying zoning things that will occur later on. So, I just, at that time, didn't understand the significant addition of space to this overlay district, and I didn't think that it was thought out very well.
Well, I will agree with the need to look at, as called for in our comprehensive plan, a overhaul of some of our more antiquated zoning designations throughout town. I think that that process is an ongoing process as we take it on. Again, this, in my mind, I don't, I don't think there's a fire or necessarily a certain urgency to move on this, but there's also the case that we do undergo comprehensive planning for a reason and we do have a process. And again, this has happened over two years since the comprehensive plan was adopted. So, if we don't start it or initiate it sometime now, when will we do that? To me, at this point, the difference, the motion to table essentially gives you the same options. We don't have to put a definitive date on when this necessarily comes back. It gives us a chance to press pause, as Councilman Clausen said. It's an important thing and I think a needed thing, and we want to get it right from the beginning. So, the motion to table seems reasonable in my mind to allow us the space and the opportunity to sit down at the subcommittee level and say, look, we've heard the public input, we've heard the concerns, we want to make sure that this is done in a way that makes sense and is beneficial to long-term development in the community. So, that would be my two cents on that. Councilman Merrill's motion is still in the forces. So, I guess procedurally, Danny, can you tell us, would a motion to table at this time supersede the motion to amend, or do we need to make a decision on the motion to amend before considering?
Or can I amend my motion? I will withdraw my earlier motion and offer a motion to table. Yes, I'm sorry. My motion to amend. I'll withdraw the motion to amend and offer a motion to table.
You have a second to withdraw the motion?
Okay.
There's a motion to withdraw and a second.
And then I'll make a motion to table, and we'll need a second for that.
There's been a motion to table and a motion to table. Okay, with the motion to table?
Yeah, excuse me, just to be clear, we're voting to table and the motion to rescind.
Right.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Yes. Motion to table, the motion to rescind, and has been seconded, and a motion to table receives an automatic vote, so we'd ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion to table carries.
Okay, that brings us to item number thirty. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five eighty-three approving amendment to section twenty-seven dash two eighty point zero-one of the city code to clarify the intent of the North Fork of the Elkhorn River overlay district and to amend section twenty-seven dash two eighty point zero-five to increase the number of review board members from five to nine and to include residency requirements. Well, yeah, but we need to go.
I'm going to go out on a limb here and offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five eighty-three.
Well, and given the previous motion, I would anticipate that there may be a motion to table on this as well.
Make a motion that we table the last motion for fifty-five eighty-three.
Motion to table, ordinance number fifty-five eighty-three. And second, and please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion to table ordinance fifty-five eighty-three carries.
Item thirty-one, I would look for a motion to consider approval of an agreement between the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation and the City of Norfolk wherein Norfolk will engage in community betterment activities by contributing three hundred thousand dollars of Keno funds to establish a fund to be used for the purchase of land and site development for industrial and commercial use in the city's zoning jurisdiction.
Make the motion.
Second, your honor.
Hey, and Andy, can you give us some background on this, please?
Sure, Mayor and Council, thank you. Well, I'll try to be brief with this. This really comes as a result of the last three or four years, about three hundred thousand dollars of Keno funds were put aside for economic development with the goal of master planning, site planning, acquiring options, acquiring property for commercial, industrial development in Norfolk, in our area and within our zoning jurisdiction. So, the money has been there, it's been set aside and moved forward as we go and try to seek projects. And one of the areas that we've identified in our economic development strategy and the things we've been looking at is the availability of property for not large-scale industry, but more of our businesses and industries we might have here in our area that want to expand or grow. And it could be anything from a small manufacturing or a small local operation, contractors, things like that, that might want a shop and a place to build a building with the hope that they will grow from that point on. So, really, you know, we wanted to try to fill that need, and it's been one that's been ongoing, and it's been a challenge. And I will say, too, there's businesses and industries right now that are in properties that probably aren't appropriate for them, that are maybe too big and more than what they need. So, the more we can do to try to help turn some of these things over and provide more opportunities, it's going to be able to help, I think, a lot of, in a lot of areas for our economic development strategy and certainly bring in new businesses, but also help our existing businesses here in town grow. So, the money was put aside, and an opportunity came up with the foundation to purchase about a hundred and forty acres of land. It's just under fringy area of the community. It's from the Bradford Land Company. The foundation right now is in a purchase agreement for that, and we've had conversations that this funding could be used to go towards master planning, acquiring that property, and this is only a small portion of that overall risk. So, the foundation has taken on most of that risk for this. But this is the city's contribution, and it will go into a fund with the foundation so that as they sell these properties, it will keep generating funding to do more of this in the community. So, this is kind of, I don't want to say revolving fund, but I guess in a way it would hopefully work that way so that as money's generated from the sale of property that this would invest in, that money would go back into the foundation to do more of this throughout the community. So, that's really how this agreement is structured, and that's more or less the background of this, and this is one of the goals the council has set up, to purchase options, to do more in that area of economic development and to acquire property and secure it, really, to get into the hands of a foundation here in town that's composed of business leaders and those that are passionate about this work. So, I would ask for your approval of this agreement so that the foundation can continue on in their, in their work to get this property acquired. And one thing I will say, there is a, not from the city, but the foundation has already put out a request for proposals for master planning for this property. We identified certain key industry segments and business segments for our region, for Madison County and for Norfolk. So, the goal is to try to design this area to attract those key industries that would be the best fit, and again, both looking at outside, wanting to come in, and also helping existing ones grow. So, that right now is out there for a firm to come in and help do some master planning. So, just as your background, so this is something that's actually actively going right now, and we have seen a lot of need in our economic development office for things like this. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Any questions for Andy on this, council?
This doesn't fall in the category of the land bank, does it?
No, not exactly. Land banks work a little bit different than this would. This is simply to have the city participate and with the foundation acquiring that property. So, the foundation would own it, they would develop it, they would sell it, dispose of it, and then that would just stay, that money would stay with the foundation to do more of that. So, kind of like a land bank, but not really, it's more or less just making sure we're able to secure the property. able to secure the property with our economic development foundation.
Andy, I believe it's true that in the recent past, we've run into some situations where land not being available certainly hinders our ability to move forward with commercial industrial projects.
Yeah, that's, that's an accurate statement, Councilman. We have run into that and as hard as that is to say, there's certain times where we just can't offer a business an opportunity to grow or to locate here. So, I hope and I believe that this will help that for certain industry segments that we can help solve that problem.
Fair to say, that's not only existing businesses here in town, but other folks from out of town looking to move here.
Yes, both.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this council?
This would be a chance then to buy out of a larger area and a smaller company couldn't afford that whole larger area, then we could sell parcels of it and work with more small companies then. Am I on the right path there? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, the ultimate goal is the foundation would like to get this area master planned and get a plan together for infrastructure. So, with that, you would design certain lots, you know, they could range anywhere from an acre to two acres, three acres, four acres in certain areas. And we would design a transportation plan with our engineering staff to make sure that our utilities and our existing infrastructure will fit within that. And so, the goal is to offer it and have a variety of opportunities. So, if you only need an acre or two acres or three acres, you can have that. And if an opportunity comes up where there's more that's needed, I mean, it's something certainly that can be looked at with that. And, you know, infrastructure is available with the area they're looking at, so, and a lot of things are making sense with what they're doing right now.
The big picture could make it more affordable and with more people.
Yes, yes, that's the goal.
All right, I think that's a good point, Councilman Jackson, because a lot of times in economic development, people get wrapped up in hitting a home run and getting the one big industry here. This will help us focus on perhaps making it easier for smaller businesses, smaller companies to locate an area, addressing one of those most persistent challenges that we have is not having shovel ready, so to speak, land available to locate them. We run into it a lot. There are businesses interested in coming here, interested in doing business in Norfolk, but we don't necessarily have the right kind of space for them to fit. This would help get at that problem.
I will just add one more. This is not something that's uncommon, you'll find this in a lot of communities that offer this, not only in Nebraska, but in states around us as well. So, I think this will help the city and our region really increase our competitive advantage to some of our other neighbors we have.
Do you, Andy, know of a few communities in Nebraska that offer this of similar size to Norfolk?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can go down the list of, you know, the cities in Nebraska of our size, your Hastings, Fremont, Carney, I mean, the list would go on, that they would all have some sort of business park, industrial park, that they would have lots and land available. And sometimes it's through a, you know, the city might have that or it's through their economic development corporation. So, in this sense, it would be through the foundation. So, in a sense, it would be through our economic development arm of the community.
Any other questions or discussion on this council? Very none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, with that, that concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council.